Here.
Mr. Lester. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Gordon. Secretary Daly?
Here.
Um, Mr. Chair, please let the record reflect that we have five members um, are present and we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is the review and approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Any, any changes to the agenda?
I have one change. Um, item number eight, the municipal planning presentation from Westminster. We'll have to reschedule. They're unable to be here this morning.
Okay. Can we get, do we need a motion, Daphne, to change that, update that?
Yeah, make a, yeah. I make a motion to uh change the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so moved. Thanks.
Aye.
Moving on to review and approval of the prior meeting minutes of March 5th and uh, March 18, 2025. Any, everybody had a chance to take a look at those? Any changes? You get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March the 5th, 2025, and can I include the minutes for March 18, 2025 also?
Mm-hmm. Second. Okay, we got it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, approved. I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Thanks. The commission member reports on March um 31st, I approved the preliminary plan plat for Sunset View Minor Subdivision. M 23 0022. Nets, oh, and I also had the privilege to attend the um
Citizens Planning Academy.
Thank you. On um, last Thursday night, and there were quite a few members that were there. Um, and we had good conversation. Laura Mathias was there as well. Um, she gave a great explanation of what the planning department does. And um, I look forward to some of those citizens possibly joining some of the committees. So. Oh, Commissioner Gordon is not able to be here today. He said he is sick, so. And anybody else? No?
No.
No? Okay. Um, administrative reports. Secretary Daly?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Chair Kirkner mentioned, uh, the Citizens Planning Academy is moving right along. Um, Andrew Gray has been doing a fabulous job of facilitating that. He's had a number of um guest speakers in to help people understand uh, what planning and um, development review and zoning are all about here on Carroll, and the objective is to um, to help educate people, get them excited about the kinds of um, work that you all see on a monthly basis and um, how they can really influence the uh, direction of their community. So, so far, um, so far so good. Uh, I think they have about two more sessions, um, and uh, we'll wrap up the first cohort. Um, a couple of other notes I just wanted to mention. The uh, Board of County Commissioners did adopt the changes to um, chapters 155 and 156 that you had recommended related to um, building permit um, limitations. They adopted them as you recommended them. So um, those are uh, going into effect. And the only other uh, note I have on administrative matters is just um, uh, thank you for your help in pulling together some um, uh, information related to the formation of the workgroups for the master plan. Those will be starting at the beginning of May. Um, we currently have um, applications open for anybody from the general public who wants to um, volunteer to serve on one of those workgroups. We're asking that folks fill those out by the end of this week, so April 18th. And um, and then we will communicate in the, the following week with everybody that um, that will uh, issue an invitation to um, to participate in those workgroups. Um, we will, just as a note, because um, two commission members are serving on each of those workgroups, and they'll, some of them will be meeting in the evenings, um, I think over the next couple of months, I'm gonna be looking at the um, evening, the regularly scheduled evening meeting for Planning and Zoning Commission, and um, making sure that we have items that need to be brought to you at that meeting. If we don't, um, then I think we can discuss on a monthly basis whether we want to still have that meeting or not. Um, especially in light of the fact that we've got these workgroup meetings that'll, that'll be meeting about every other month. I mean, every other week, sorry. Okay?
Extensions.
Yes, good morning. Laura Mathias, Bureau of Development Review. We have had three extensions since we last met. Um, the first one is Herd, Herd Property Assisted Living Facility. This is relatively recent. This is the first extension, so you'll probably all remember this. Um, it's S 19 0030. This is an assisted living facility of 80 units, five buildings of 16 units. As I said, you probably recall this one. Um, so this is the first one-year extension of that approval. It is in Commissioner District Two. The second one, uh, we are now on our 14th one-year extension. This is just a minor subdivision one lot. It's M 09 025. It's called Walkerwood Estates Two, and that is in Commissioner District Two as well. And the third one, also a fairly recent, um, this is the first one-year extension for this project. This is Performance Food Service, Ninth amended plan. That is an S 18 0021. And so they have requested their first one-year extension while they actually work through their legal document phase right now. They're getting pretty close. So, that's it. Just three. Thank you.
Thank you. Curious, is there limit to how many extensions?
There is no limit.
Okay, I didn't think so. Okay. BZA cases.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I have three BZA cases that will be uh, subject to review later this month. Case 6551 is a request for a conditional use for a cemetery on a residential property. The owner of this land is requesting for this conditional use so that she can bury her husband in the backyard of her property. The plat is located at 1218 Francis Scott Key Highway and is located in the county's C1 Zone. Planning staff finds this request for a conditional use is consistent with the Carroll County Master Plan as amended in 2019. Case 6553 is a request for a conditional use for a two-family dwelling. The plat is located at 198 Adeline Drive and is located in the county's residential 10,000 Zone. The lot is approximately 10,881 square feet. Planning staff finds this request for a conditional use is consistent with the Carroll County Master Plan as amended in 2019, though it is not entirely consistent with the land use designation of high-density residential. Case 6554 is a request for a conditional use for an Amish private school. The plat is located at 2444 Old Bachman Valley Road and is located in the county's agricultural zone. The lot is approximately 109 acres. Planning staff finds this request for a conditional use is generally consistent with the Carroll County Master Plan as amended in 2019.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope, okay. Number eight has been taken off. We move to nine, the special report. Elevated Botanics Cannabis Dispensary.
You're good, no, you're good. I just realized that I don't have a keyboard. I don't have any way to choose.
Oh, do you have, do you want this? And you might need the mouse pad there. Um, do you want the keyboard? Usually.
Do you want the keyboard, Mark?
Will it, will it reach? Oh my God, I can't even see the... Alright, sorry, I thought number, I didn't know I was sliding into the number eight position, but I'm, I'm, I'm almost with you. You're gonna have to help me out here, sorry. Is that it?
Yeah, go all the way to the bottom.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, David. Okay, life is good. Thank you for your patience. Alright. Thank you, alright. Again, Laura Mathias with the Bureau of Development Review. We have three projects from Development Review that are on the agenda today, and I will be um, working through the first two, I think. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, um, so our first plan before you today, these are, these are both considered special reports. This is a little bit different in your world, and I'm just gonna frame that for you so you understand um, what we saw and reviewed and what we are asking you to then approve. So, this is a special report. The, the file number, county file number is SF 240073, and the name of the project is Elevated Botanics Cannabis Dispensary. And we have some representatives for the project here with us this morning. If you would all take a moment and introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, my name is Alan Sharp, and I'm advising Kalen, who'll introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Kalen Spicknell. I am heading this project in full owner.
I'm Steve Larson. I'm uh, representing the landlord.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Um, so I'm going to go through the report, and, and then if you have any questions for them, you can feel free to ask those, okay? Or of me, but, um, so the project location is 25 Liberty Road, which is Maryland Route 26. We're on the south side of Liberty Road at Clees Mill. So you'll see that highlighted right in the center here. There we go, that is our site, okay? Um, it is, you'll see red, which indicates on the zoning map a C2 commercial medium intensity. That's the zoning here, and it's about one acre in size. Okay, so the plan is coming before you today per chapter 158, which is our zoning code. So chapter 158 point 059C says specifically under cannabis that the use shall be subject to site plan approval by the Planning Commission pursuant to chapter 155 050. So 155 is our development and subdivision regulations, and that's what we're usually here for. In this case, chapter 158 is bringing me in front of you today. So, a little background, just so you know, it's further down in the report, but this plan was reviewed. You'll notice the, the county file number is a little different. So there's two things right now. Chapter 158 is bringing us here, and the county file number is SF, which is a simplified site plan. So because of the scope of this project, there are two existing buildings on the site. They are moving into that and changing the previous use to their current proposed use, and there is very little disturbance on the site. So all of those in combination led us to, we were able to process this as a simplified site plan. We usually don't bring those in front of you. Once they receive all the technical agency approvals, they can get their permit, et cetera, work through that process, okay? So that's a little different. Just some background on this type, this type of plan. Alright, so I'm gonna go through the existing conditions and what's proposed on site. Thanks for the keyboard. That was nice, okay. So here's a zoom in of the site. There are two buildings on this property. So it has a previously approved site plan back from 1986. They ran a plan, they called it Clees Mill Center. It did have both of the structures that you see, and multiple businesses ran on this property over the course of time. Currently, both structures are vacant. Okay. So if we go back to just for a second, to what's around it in the zoning, so immediately adjoining to, I'm gonna call it the east and the west, uh, are commercially zoned properties. The one, I believe, hosts a restaurant right now to the west. The other is vacant. You'll see that right here. Okay. And then to the south adjoining this property, you'll see the green. The green is conservation zoned properties. And there is a subdivision back here with single-family dwellings. So the developer proposes to use one of the structures, just one, and the building located closest to Liberty Road, right here, for a cannabis dispensary. So the plan does note that the retail floor area is 3,540 square feet. And we know from the code that cannabis dispensaries of less than 10,000 square feet are a principal permitted use in the C2 commercial medium intensity zoning district. The parking requirements for the total of the site are 32 spaces, and there are 40 that exist on the property. They are not proposing any new freestanding signs to go along with this use. The only proposed improvement, oh, existing pictures. You'll probably recognize if you've driven along 26, I'm sure you'll recognize that, the gray building there. So the only proposed improvements are right here along the side of the building. They're proposing to um, uh, to construct a drive aisle to connect the front and the back parking lot. There is one on this side of the building, and they are simply proposing to add more paving on this side for a drive aisle. So that's it. And, and on the plan, the disturbance associated with that is under 1,000 square feet of disturbance. So again, with the, the change of the use and the limits of disturbance being under 5,000 square feet, the code does permit the plan to be processed as what we call a simplified site plan. It does get distributed to applicable technical agencies. This was reviewed by the Bureau of Resource Management. It is exempt from their codes. Uh, it was also then seen by site compliance and fire protection and emergency services. They reviewed it and approved the plan, and our zoning administrator. So, the zoning administrator did review the plan for compliance with the zoning code, and those requirements for cannabis are specifically outlined in the zoning code, chapter 158. This plan met all requirements, and the zoning administrator approved the plan as well. So all technical agencies that needed to look at it, looked at it, approved it, and they are a principal permitted use here. I've included in the staff report the definition for cannabis dispensary, as well as chapter 158 point 059, the section on cannabis, which outlines the requirements. So both of the first two projects utilize this section of code, and I am happy to read through the specifics of that code if it would be helpful for everyone. I, I think because it's, it's newer to our code, that might be useful, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. So, 158 point 059 cannabis uses related to growing, processing, dispensing of cannabis need to comply with the following requirements in the code. And the first is regarding distance requirements. So there are a couple of distance requirements, and they want you to know upfront, the code says "distance is taken from the nearest point of the structure occupied by the use requiring the separation to the nearest point of the structure from which the separation is to be established." Okay, so this is not property lines, this is structure to structure. So, a licensed cannabis dispensary may not locate within 500 feet of a pre-existing primary or secondary school in the state, or a licensed childcare center, or a registered family childcare home under Title 9.5 of the Education Article, or B, a pre-existing playground, recreation center, library, public park, or place of worship, or within a half a mile of another cannabis dispensary. So those are the distance requirements. They were looked at by our zoning office, and they were, the, this meets those distance requirements. B says, "A licensed cannabis dispensary structure may not be located within 100 feet of the property line of a residential zoning district." So if we go back to that zoning map, you'll recall, commercial, commercial, conservation zoning district. Okay, residential zoning district would be in our district, R 40, R 20, R 10. So it met that requirement. C says, "The use shall be subject to site plan approval by the Planning Commission pursuant to chapter 155 050," which is why we're here. D, "All lighting, including security lighting recorded by Comar 10.62, 10.05, shall comply with the Carroll County site plan requirements as specified in chapter 155 050." The lighting on the property exists already. It was approved previously. E, "No variances from the requirements of this section shall be granted." F, "Cannabis products are not permitted to be sold in conjunction with a temporary zoning certificate." And G, "A cannabis dispensary in conjunction with an onsite consumption establishment is prohibited in all zoning districts." Okay? So for the benefit of the public and all of you, I wanted to just read through that and assure you that the zoning administrator who is here today with us, if you have questions for Anna, it does meet all the technical review requirements. So we are here again today for your approval. If you have any questions for staff or for um, the developer, we are all here to answer them, and I will note, please, for the record, I noticed when I went through my report today that in the location, it says Election District Four. This is Commissioner District Four, just to note. That's it.
If I could just um, add on to that really quickly and actually ask um, Liz to give a little bit of an explainer, because this is a new review process for us. And thank you, Laura, for going through what we have in our code. Just as a reminder, what we have in our code is also kind of dictated by state law, and state law um, requires that we not be more restrictive um, in terms of these uh, facilities than how we would regulate general retail. So um, if I could just ask Liz to kind of give a little bit of an explainer on that so that you have also sort of the full background on how our code came into being.
Absolutely. So Maryland State Code set forth the requirements that we based our code off of. Um, they do not allow us to be more restrictive. They were very upfront in the writing of the legislation that was passed um, to dictate this. Um, I'd also like to note that in the Maryland State Code, which we still have to follow in addition to our own codes, uh, they do make it very clear that we cannot adopt additional ordinances, or we cannot ad- adopt additional restrictions that would essentially be more restrictive than a liquor retail store. So if you are, so requirements that we put in place for uh, this uh, retail division, we cannot make them more restrictive than we would a liquor store. Um, so kind of keep that in mind as you're uh, looking at what allowances and, and what you're approving here. Um, but I do wanna just note that our hands are a little tied in this, um, and that the state of Maryland sets forth our requirements, and we are, we must follow them very, uh, very strictly.
Thank you. I will note that in the past, um, there were, was a liquor store in actually both of those buildings. So, not that that's, um, but I am curious, the drive on the left, that um, is there a specific reason just to?
Um, yeah, I mean, we wanna give it um, a better flow to the parking lot, but uh, definitely for potential future options for us of maybe a drive window, but right now, we just wanna have a good access for our customers to be able to move around the parking lot.
Gentlemen.
Are there any plans for the back?
No, not at this time. We are just renting the front building right now.
Laura, you mentioned um, in your report signage, and there wasn't any signage related to this?
So no new signage is proposed? There is an existing freestanding sign. Um, you could probably see it, right? So there's an existing freestanding sign. Um, building mounted signage is always an option, but if there's a freestanding, we do ask that they go onto the plans. This is already on the site, and they're not proposing any new signage, freestanding.
Are there any proposals to change that signing, the neon or lighting or?
No, we're gonna use it how it is.
But uh, how many um, in the business model, how many employees are projected to work there?
Um, we do not have that quite yet. Um, we're expected to maybe have five at a time.
And then what would the hours of operation be?
Uh, the state of Maryland allows us to function between eight and 11. We have not set our own exact hours between those yet.
The um, and what's the age of the current structures on, on the property?
I, I can say that. My husband built them.
So not that old?
No, not that old. Um, they were probably in the earlier eighties, I think.
And do we have the, I, I, look, I know there's sensitivity around this because of the closeness to the schools. You know, that's the elephant in the room, right? So what exactly is, what is the measurement between this property to the school property? What's the exact measurement?
Going to defer to our zoning administrator, whose office took the measurement.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm not sure if uh, you wanna see it, or you have specific question to what building you need to have.
So, so the, the uh, the measurements have to be, you know, the structure has to be the 500-foot limit is what I'm looking for. So what, what is the, what is the distance?
So I have different kind of distances that we took. The most specific ones are from the school. and from outdoor area for the school as well. So, if I'm looking from the actual structure to structure, how it says in our code, that how we have to measure. So, from the cannabis dispensary structure to the school, it's a 1,327 feet. From the structure to the property line of the school is a 523 feet. And of course, outdoor recreational area, there is a basketball court and, you know, all the stuff that kids play on. So, it's inside of the property, so it's a little bit farther. It's 543 feet.
And do you have a measurement from property line to property line?
Yes. I actually had it before, but no, I have from the school to, from the cannabis dispensary, from the building to the property line is 530 feet. Not from the property line.
But our code, Laura, is, is not, it's, is it building to building? Is that what the code is?
Correct.
Any traffic studies proposed related to this site?
Not, not, it was, they were not necessary.
Steve.
No, I'm assuming there's no conflicts with the restaurant and everything sharing that incoming?
That access drive?
Yeah.
No, it's existing, previously approved under other plans, correct.
Look like you're studying.
Well, I was looking at it. You know, of course, we have a building that's right beside it that we approved or didn't approve two years ago. That's mixed use and with apartments in it. But 100 feet, it sounds like from the state standpoint, we're kind of handlocked, that it's not a whole lot we can do if only it meets the requirements. So, yeah, that's what I'll say.
Ralph?
Well, I have a lot of problems with this. And it seems like the state has handcuffed us on all the major concerns. Mostly the amount of letters that we've gotten with valid concerns about where this location is. I don't think, if you want to take a test case, this probably is the, is the granddaddy of them all because you have a school very close to it, you have daycare centers very close to it, you have residential very, very close to this, you have playground areas very, very close to this. This, this is very, very concerning to me. And I hate to think that we're so handcuffed that, that we have to stand here and clench our teeth on something like this. I just think this is the worst possible location that anybody could pick for a dispensary like this. I think that's what we're here for, to question certain things. And I certainly question this.
Yeah, I do have to agree with you too, just based on the letters that we have received from the public. I mean, the concerns are very, very valid. And just for me, it's just frustrating that we're hamstrung. Like, we just, we can say what we want to say, but what can we do?
Yeah, I'm not gonna sit here and say I'm gonna, you know, turn down all these because of this, of the type of business this is. That's not the case. The case here is, I think this location is just horrible. The dynamics of it and the, the whole thing, so that's my opinion. And I'm, and I'm voicing that opinion based on so many letters that I saw. Since I've been on this, on this board, this commission, I've never seen so many letters come in with valid, valid concerns. And I feel like it's my job to, to voice those concerns on behalf of the community. That's why we're here.
Have you looked at other locations when you were trying to find a place?
We looked very extensively. Due to all the restrictions, the setback distances, it's, it's very difficult to find any location that conforms with all the state and local requirements. So, we, we spent months and months scouring for locations. And I'll just mention the concerns you addressed relating to the community. I own my first house in Sykesville. Kaylin's a Carroll County resident, so we're very sensitive to those concerns you raised and planning to, you know, run an operation that's in conformance with all the state laws to protect the integrity of the community.
I understand all the sentiments that go with this. However, we are here looking at it from a zoning perspective. And even though we may feel differently, that should not enter into our decision-making as we come to that.
But Madam Chairman, I do think we have the responsibility to voice the concerns of the citizens.
I agree.
And we're talking about a lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of neighbors in this area, especially the school. The school bothers me greatly. And to, to boil this all down to a couple inches and a couple feet, to say, "Well, it's, it's just a couple feet now, but we made, we made it." I just, I'm very concerned about this.
So, it's building to building is what the code is? And that was 1,300 and something?
It was over 1,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Richard?
I think we all feel the same way, but, you know, there's not a lot we can do at this point, I don't think.
I, so originally, there was a liquor store there in both of the buildings, same liquor store. And at that time, there were similar complaints because, you know, liquor industry is a controlled substance, as is cannabis. So, I, I don't know. Do you all have anything you would like to add?
Just that, you know, I understand the concerns. We employ age screening, so there's, you know, it's 21-plus qualified patients, caregivers. It's not, like, you can just walk in as if, you know, in a liquor store, you can walk in, you're right, you're right there. We're gonna have a waiting area where we're screening IDs, verifying not only age, whether they're a qualified patient or caregiver before allowing access into any room where there is any cannabis present. So, there is that additional barrier that perhaps would provide some comfort.
So, the, so I couldn't just walk in and say?
No, you'd have to go in through the waiting room where we would verify your, your age or identity before allowing you into the dispensing area, yes.
Not that I'm going in, but.
Talk a little bit about the security in the building, around the building.
Sure, so the state mandates a lot of the security restrictions that are in place. For example, we have to have a secure room where all the cannabis is kept, except for the hours, two hours before we open and two hours after we close. So, it will always be in a secure locked room. There's a lot of requirements that address the video surveillance. We have to have surveillance at every entryway into the building, within the building. It's all kept for at least 90 days. It has to be of sufficient detail for facial, you know, so you can determine who somebody may be. There will be security alarm systems. They have to have battery backup. It's very extensive list of security requirements. So, it's, it's not a just throw up a sign and we open. It's very, a lot of infrastructure has to go into place to ensure the security, which we will obviously comply with. And in addition to our Carroll County inspection, we'll also have to get a state of Maryland inspection.
What about outdoor security? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, it's still cash-based business where people will be outside with a lot of cash?
There are cashless payment options in the space now that is opening up a little bit, but we will have that video surveillance and, you know, perimeter, perimeter security will, you know, extend to the area around the physical structure itself.
Anything further?
I'll comment. I'll comment. I'll comment.
Yeah, that, I know.
I just wanted to mention quickly, you did receive multiple emails, as you all mentioned. Those came directly to you. In addition to that, I received one phone call a few days ago. And that was the same type of conversation. And I think there's a lot of uncertainty as to what this type of business looks like and looks like in the next few months, looks like in the next year, looks like, right? Like, who's coming there, how is it operating and functioning? So, that was the conversation that was had with that individual that called, concerns of what that means for the, the area, the neighborhood.
I would, I would make one more comment. Who owns the vacant parcel next to that? Is that owned by the same person? Because it's gonna kind of almost limit what goes on there if they would ever do anything.
Yeah, it, it is owned, not literally by the same entity, but it's, it's part of the same business.
Okay, I have a question, Laura. If a daycare center would want to open up in the future, and this would limit the ability for that daycare center to open up anywhere close to this, it would have to meet the, the distance requirements because of this business?
That's a great question. I have an answer in my head, but the better person to answer is our zoning administrator. It'd be similar to, there are other uses that have distance requirements, but if the use is there prior to, then?
Correct, yeah. For any, because that would be existing business, so any future?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I, I.
Because that will be in existing business, so any future developments as a daycare or schools, that won't be, you know, pertain to the actual distance requirements. So, it will be regular setbacks.
Basically, that new user coming in already is aware of the existing use, right? It's not in the, it's opposite. This coming in as a new use has to meet all those distance requirements. But if you, if you were opening a daycare, you'd be aware of everything in the area. So, it doesn't work in the reverse. Does that make sense?
You could open a daycare, you could open a child daycare center right next to this.
If you wanted to.
If you wanted to in the future, it wouldn't... Whoa.
That, that would be honestly on the person that did that. The stores that are coming next to that, are there any conflicts there with anything? Do you know, did any?
You're referring to the?
The new shop.
The new area there?
As, as of right now, nothing. There is no existing that would prevent them to, you know, open it up.
Okay. Okay, so what do you need from us?
Do you want to, did you want to open to?
Oh, yeah. Sure, yes, I do. And before I open to public comment, I am required to read the following rules. If you wish to speak, you must have signed in to make public comment. You must state your name, address, and talk into the microphone to facilitate, facilitate audio and video recording. Comments will be limited to three minutes a speaker. It is not a question and answer session. If you have other questions, you can direct them to staff after the meeting. And lastly, if anybody would fail to comply with the rules, I have the authority to call them out of order and ask them to leave the meeting. So, with that, is there anybody that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. And I guess before we do that, you, you spoke about the people that called in the letters we received. I did notice in some of the letters, I think there was a misconception because I think they thought that maybe the people were going there for treatment in the way they wrote a couple of them.
Right.
So, I would suggest that maybe you as new owners reach out to the community and let them know exactly you're not there to have problems and you take it seriously.
Absolutely.
So, now, what do we need to do?
The code is requiring site plan approval by the planning commission, so.
Public comment.
I did publicly.
Everybody wants to speak? No?
No, nobody wants to speak. I have one other quick question. You said for future use, possibly a drive-in window? Is that something that would be allowed?
Yes, it is. And it'll be strictly for pickup orders if we did something like that. That is what the ones that are currently functioning with ones in the state, they have to be pre-orders, and it's only paying and receiving your product.
The plan would need to go back through a process to verify. We have queuing requirements for drive-throughs so you, to make sure that the vehicles don't interfere with the parking spaces, et cetera. So, they would need to come back through same simplified process, and, and we would be here.
So, for the pickup, I'm assuming there's a whole set of standards that need to be met, checking identification, age?
All the verification steps are still in place.
All that stuff.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm good. All right, so, gentlemen.
Well, before we make a motion, I, you know, reiterate the same sentiments as the, the board here. It's, our hands are tied to an extent. Disappointing to see where the location is. Yes, it's within code for proximity to schools and things like that. And then, it's, it's just, you know, we wish it was about another location for you guys. We're not, like, certainly need the business. We, Carroll County needs the tax revenue, the state needs the tax revenue. Hell, they just jacked the rate for places like your business types like yours. But, you know, you do meet all the requirements, so. With that said, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for elevated botanics cannabis dispensary SF240073 in accordance with Chapter 158.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, because I want to, but it's.
That's not in the record.
I second.
Okay, I assume this is a voice vote, vote?
Roll call, please. Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Robertson?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swyson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, please let the record reflect. We have four yays and one abstain.
Okay. You are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Moving on, number 10, Bethel Road Cannabis Dispensary and Grower.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Board members?
Good morning. All right, let me move on forward in our slide presentation. Perfect, okay. Our second item on the agenda is very, 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 very similar to the first item on the agenda. Location is different, and the slight differentiation here is the zoning district is different for this dispensary. So this is a dispensary and grower. So this is again a special report. Our county file number is SF 240055, and it's called the Bethel Road Cannabis Dispensary and Grower. Again, we have representatives here with us this morning for the project, and if you would please introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, good morning. My name is Clifton Koger.
I'm Derek Murphy. I'm the CEO.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. So the location for this project is 1907 Bethel Road. We are out towards the Finkburg area. We're on the east side of Bethel Road at Maryland 140 in Commissioner District 2. The property zoning, you'll see we've moved to purple. Purple, in this case, is I-1 light industrial. The property itself is 2.65 acres, and we are here per the same chapter of the zoning code 158.059. The use shall be subject to site plan approval by the planning commission pursuant to chapter 155.050. What is that zoomed in image of our site? So the subject property does also, similar to before, has a previously approved 2015, simplified site plan for a commercial kennel following a Board of Zoning Appeals approval of that use for this property. Obviously, it is not being used as a commercial kennel right now. There are multiple structures that you'll see on site all along here, and one large building here. And we do have some images of that. So that larger building, here's the Bethel Road, here's the entrance off of Bethel Road, there's the county vehicle. As we come back, you'll see the white building on the right-hand side, that is this concrete block building, that is the large structure that we just went and showed on the aerial. And then we have some additional buildings on the left-hand side, wood. All right, so the subject property and the property to the south are in that light industrial zoning district. And you'll see the existing access here is actually shared with that corner property, which is vacant right now. If I go back to the zoning map, so you can see the zoning of the property, but also surrounding properties, so you'll see the I-1, I-1. And then to the north, we have agriculturally zoned properties, and they are built with single-family dwellings in this area. You'll see there's a little bit of conservation that touches the property. And then across Bethel Road, we have commercially zoned properties, and that is where the Royal Farms, there's a Royal Farms gas station and convenience store right there. So that might orient you. Probably most people are familiar with that Royal Farms. So the developer proposes to use one of the structures, this concrete block building, which is located centrally on this property, for a cannabis dispensary and growing facility. Cannabis dispensaries in conjunction with a cannabis growing and/or processing facility are a principal permitted use in the I-1 zoning district. As noted on the plans, there will be no public services on the premise, and the developer can speak to that as before. Any questions regarding the business operation? Existing parking on the site will accommodate 10 employees, which is indicated on the plan. So you'll see the building, the centrally located building here. There are no new proposed freestanding signs, and the developer is not proposing any ground disturbance. There's no new structures, no new anything going on to the site. So with the change of the use and the limits of disturbance being zero square feet, this plan was processed as a simplified site development plan. It was reviewed by all applicable technical agencies. It's exempt from Bureau of Resource Management codes. Again, site compliance and fire protection and emergency services reviewed and approved the plan. And again, the zoning administrator also reviewed the plan for compliance with the zoning code and the requirements outlined in chapter 158. All the requirements are met, and zoning administrator has also approved the plan. So in accordance with chapter 158.059c, the plan is before the planning commission for approval. Again, the only difference here is that they also are grower. I've added that into the staff report, the definition, so you can see that. The code section is the same. I don't think anyone else entered the room since the last time I read through these, so I'm not going to read through the code chapter again. I will spare you all. And actually, this one, I have not received any phone calls on this particular project. I'm not sure if you received emails on this location, but I haven't heard from any citizens regarding this. And that's it. If you have questions for the developers or myself, please?
I have a question. How far are we, this site, to the existing dispensary off of 97?
The one we just know?
There's a dispensary off of-
By the airport, yeah.
He's talking about the dispensary. I think we have about six miles.
Okay, up by that, I don't know the distance. I'm not sure anyone in this room would be able to answer this in this moment, but-
Why would we have, why would you be interested in having a dispensary so close to an existing dispensary?
Well, we're different than most public dispensaries. We'd actually only deliver. So for instance, like Maddy Turner says, she don't want to go into the story. Actually, do more sort of the Amazon-type model, where you would go on a website, order your products. We will actually deliver to you, ID you, and make sure you have your proper IDs. The payment is actually done online, so there is no exchange of funds. So we don't see it as a conflict, because we're more over delivery, and that's what the whole purpose of a micro dispensary is, is more focused on delivery and for the discretion of the users, whether it may be medical or non-medical.
So there isn't any store on this as part of the building? It's just a-
It's more of a distribution type. If you think of it more of a, like I said, Amazon Distribution Center. We have products there, they place their orders, and then we would deliver it to their homes after we identify them and do an age verification.
So then there'll be no parking for anything, anybody but your employee?
Workers. So under the MCA, we can only have 10 workers per uses. So we can have 10 for the cultivation and 10 for the dispensary.
And then would you have signage then?
There is a sign on the wall, but we have no plans for that sign at this moment. More of a discretionary, discreet location right now.
And how many employees do you envision having?
Probably for the delivery, up to 10. And that's the maximum amount we can have, is 10 per MCA's regulation.
So how, I'm sorry, how do you regulate? Somebody, somebody calls you, they want to have it delivered?
One, there's an age block on the actual website, so you have to actually specifically put, say, I'm over 21, before you even get into there. There's also a mechanism where you have to put your information within the website itself. And then we will verify that information as soon as we get to your home by looking at your driver's license and date of birth on your license. But typically, all the information is entered into the system, then we verify it again once we go to your home and deliver. There is no drop-off, like an exception. We don't drop it off and leave it on your doorstep. We actually physically see you, ID you, and then make sure you receive the product that you ordered.
Okay, so I order it online, go through the process, you come to my house, I had to run out for an emergency and my granddaughter's there. You don't leave it? Okay.
So I hadn't actually heard of these before. How many are in the state of Maryland now, set up like this?
Right now, this is, we are actually one of the first ones coming up as far as a micro dispensary. So there is, from what I can understand now, there is no one out there yet. There are a lot of licenses out there, but they all have to obviously find a location and get to the board.
What, are you going to grow everything you sell, or obviously not?
We had the opportunity to work with other growers and other processors as far as products. So we want to offer our customers a variety of what's best in Maryland and safe, obviously.
So there's no growing on site here?
This particular facility, we can grow there. So we would have some growth, we would have a growth there, probably about 3,000 plants at any given time.
That's inside?
Inside, yes, ma'am. There is no external growing.
I am familiar with this building. It's a, seems like it's always the current event barn, whatever's going on politically. Somebody seems to let the side of the building know and spray paint, so I'm very familiar with this building.
So, good question from a fire point of view. How, what?
If, I mean, a fire approved it, since it really, normally if you're changing or modifying a certain part of the actual floor plan or structure, that's normally where the, you know, in a grandfather or an old building, that's where the sprinkler code will kick in. But it seems like the building's going to stay the building, so that's probably why fire approved it. You know, it's just like if you're renovating a house, if you do, I believe it's for 50% or more of the floor plan, then they make you sprinkle it, you know, so on and so forth. But if it's basically staying the same.
Given that amount of growing inside the facility, is there a requirement, are you going to run into any need to upgrade electrical?
Yes, once we get to ascertain the amount of electricity needs, we are real, and we have spoke to the local electric companies to upgrade it. Right now, I think it's mostly 110, but we definitely need 240 volts. And that will have to obviously go through permitting and through BG&E to increase that voltage to that facility. I mean, it's an old facility, so it's barely, we barely can do what we need to do initially.
If you are doing all that, you may want to reach out, because this is Carroll County, and this is under the jurisdiction of the Maryland State Fire Marshal.
Right.
So they may actually make this building become sprinkled.
Right. Well, we went through that process, and that's why it took us longer than we anticipated being here.
And you went there with the Maryland State Fire Marshal or Carroll County?
Carroll. So, yeah, I understand that. We have to, if we add gas or anything like that, we have to actually go through the whole process.
Like I said, I would just double-check that, because if, like, say, you're not on city, I mean, if you're on city water, I mean, for something like this, you're looking at a six-inch line plus coming in if you're on well water.
Right.
40, 50,000 gallon tank.
Yes.
So.
And we had the water tested, so it's, right now suffice, as of right now, give us water.
You just might want to reach out to the Maryland State Fire Marshal, so that you don't put all this work into it, and then you can't open, because like, no, you need to sprinkle it in.
Right. We've been dealing with that constantly.
This is quite a unique business model you have here. But could you just review a little bit for us about any security that would be-
Just like the previous gentleman, we have the same security. We have security around the building. Every entrance have actually two security cameras. We do, if you look at the long driveway, we do have the ability to see the individual and the license plates of the car coming down the driveway. So, I mean, even if a bee goes by our cameras, it is motion sensor, so it will start recording. And as the gentleman previous said, we have a 90-day log that we have to maintain if anything should happen. So we, and that's per the reg. So we have the same security as any dispensary, we just have it at a building that's practically in a cornfield.
So would you be just selling what you grow?
No, we will have multiple products from different vendors in the state, sir. Kind of like a drugstore, you know?
Ralph, anything?
No.
I think he appreciates this one a little bit better than the first one.
You said it, I'd- More than I'd have. I appreciate your candor on this.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. Once again, no, Mike, nothing?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'll open it up for any public comment, if anybody would like to speak. Nope, seeing none. We have this-
I'm sorry, I asked one more question. Is this, I probably missed it. Is this zone commercial or commercial industrial?
It's I-1, which is our light industrial district.
Okay, because there's a lot of industrial down Bethel there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Yes, so the purple on here are all industrial zones, and the red are commercial.
What's all the green back there? Is that?
This is conservation zoning, correct.
Where's the dump?
Pass that. The dump is up further west.
Okay.
The landfill.
Yeah, that's it. All right, okay. So we're back to making the action.
Let me try. I make a motion that we apply SF 24-0055, Bethel Road Cannabis Dispensary and Grower, asset 4th, chapter 158.
I'll second. Roll.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lester? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon? Okay, Madam Chair, please let the record reflect that we have five members, five yays, and zero nays.
Okay, all right. You are approved. So, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. How you doing? Need a laugh in?
It's a way different model. I'm more comfortable with that. We'll deliver to the home, who's accepting it. I know, that's my rule of thumb.
Good morning, how are you?
It is what it is.
You have to put something in that, like, verify. Proper, like, you'd have to put your license to verify.
You would scan, have to scan your driver's license as part of the order.
Oh, there it is. Too many papers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Oh, and Mr. Schaefer, we haven't seen you in a while.
Morning, yeah.
Morning.
Is it too late to amend to an event facility and cannabis dispensary?
That's a party I want to be at.
Our theme is going to be, you have to be high to get married here.
Okay. No.
That, that was, for the record, that was a joke.
Oh, okay.
Or an attempt at a joke.
Okay, stand up aside. Uh, my name is David B. Kraft. I'm with the Bureau of Development Review. Uh, as you see, the next project on the agenda this morning is the Manor at River Run, file number S-22-0004. Uh, Ms. Marple, who is the coordinator for this project, unfortunately could not be here, uh, so I will be presenting in her place. Uh, in saying that, I'm, I'm familiar enough with the proj, project, so I should be able to answer questions. But we do have representatives from the project here, uh, who will be able to answer any questions that may crop up, uh, and I will let them introduce themselves.
Uh, good morning, Clark Schaefer, 73 East Main Street. I'm an attorney representing, uh, the Manor at River Run. I have with me Ashley Hall.
My name is Ashley Hall. I'm with the Manor at River Run.
I'm Jimathias with DDC, 184 East Main Street, Westminster.
Thank you. And this project is before the Planning Zoning Commission as a concept plan, so we're not looking for any action that's required. However, as with any site plan within the county, the commission has the, the right to delegate final approval to the chair. So the property itself is off of Old Bachman Valley Road. As you can see, it is highlighted here. Uh, for those who are unfamiliar with the area, uh, this is 97 here, uh, this is 140 down here, and the airport is in this location here. So the property we're looking at is 28.8 acres and it is a residential farm property. Uh, as mentioned, it is on the west side of Old Bachman Valley Road, uh, and it is north of the city limits, uh, city Westminster limits. Uh, as you can see, the property itself, um, has a lot of structures on it. So right here is an existing historic brick house. Uh, behind it is a detached accessory dwelling. Over in this area, you'll see there's a barn here and there's a few other, um, outbuildings and sheds on the property. Um, as you can see by this map, there are portions of the property that are under the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation easement or mouth easement. Uh, these easements are continuations of the existing easement surrounding the property. So all of this purple line area, this is all mouth agricultural preservation easement. What's on the property is three different pieces, so a piece here, there's a piece here, and then following this little strip of land going down to Old Bachman Valley Road, uh, there is an ag land preservation easement there. Um, in total, all three of these portions on the property are 7.2 acres. Um, I'll mention this before we get into the, the details of what's being proposed, is that mouth has reviewed and approved this proposed use, um, and the changes to this property. So they have been involved in the review of this development. So although nothing proposed is changing anything in these easements, they've been, um, involved just because that there is an easement on the subject property. So the property itself, um, is within the agricultural land or the agricultural zoning district, uh, as are all the properties surrounding it. So this is all agriculturally zoned properties. As you can see, it is mostly farmland. Um, you do see some residences along the front here, um, as well as this farm and farmhouse back here. If you go a little bit further west of this property, so not this farm here, but the properties over here, uh, these are within city Westminster limits, uh, and they are zoned industrial. So, uh, this property is, is very close to the city Westminster limits, uh, along 97. Uh, the property is outside of the water service area, the sewer service area, the designated growth area, and the priority funding area. So it's outside of all of those certain areas. Uh, being outside the water and sewer areas, this is on well and septic. So what's being proposed now, um, and this is just a, a drawing that shows the full property, uh, but we'll zoom in to kind of the, the meat of the property here. So what's being proposed now is a paved parking lot that's located in this area here, so just to the immediate left of the existing barn, which is shown here. And with that, there is a, a tent pad for the events as well as a restroom building slash trailer located right here. So this is where the event pad will be, and, and this is where the, um, facilities, the, the bathroom facilities will be located. A dumpster is also proposed at the end of the parking areas down here. Uh, lights are proposed along the edges of the building and as pole lights that are in the parking lot. Um, the lot itself provides parking for the facilities, so, um, the requirements of the zoning code require 50 parking spaces. Uh, there are 52 parking spaces for the events that are being proposed. So if we kind of go, uh, back to the beginning of where all of this started, on January 5th, 2022, uh, the owner presented a conditional use to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, um, a, a country inn, as it was back then, is a conditional use within the agricultural zoning district. Um, they took a request to the Board of Zoning Appeals and that request was approved with the condition that live music would cease at 10 o'clock PM. Um, following that approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, temporary permits for the use of the site have been approved, um, through the years. And the site configuration to this point has been bolt, has been temporary. So, um, in relation to that temporary, there is a, a parking pad put in place for those events, uh, as well as the restroom trailer that was put on the property for those events. With this site plan, as mentioned, there's gonna be construction of a more per, permanent parking area. Uh, the building structure around the relocated restroom trailer is going to occur. So there's a restroom trailer, as mentioned, it's gonna get relocated here, and then there's going to be a, a pole barn style roof that's put over that. And then, um, as mentioned, just the, the relocation of the, the parking pad. On August 15th, the initial state plan was submitted and distributed for review. It did go before the planning or the, the technical review committee meeting on September 26th. Uh, at that meeting, there was one member of the public that was present, uh, but they did not voice any, uh, opinion on this development. Through the review process, it was mentioned that a parking aisle or a, an access drive, uh, which an access drive connects roads or parking areas, uh, between, you know, a parking lot and, and the public road. So in this case, it would be the driveway. Those are required to be 18 feet wide, uh, per our code. A request was made to the then zoning administrator to reduce that requirement uh, from 18 feet down to a, a minimum of eight point, of eight feet, two inches, to allow for an unmodified use of the driveway. So they didn't want to make any modification to the driveway, uh, so they were requesting that reduction of the width. Uh, that request was denied April 20th, 2023 by the zoning administrator. Following that, on August 29th, 2023, uh, two requests were made to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The first request was to appeal that denial by the zoning administrator of the driveway width, and the second one was to modify the previous BCA approval. So as mentioned, um, the p, previous approval was for a country inn. Uh, with a country inn, you can have events, but you also have to have accommodations for overnight facility. Uh, the owners no longer wanted to have that overnight facility, uh, aspect of, of the, the use of the property. So they wanted to, to remove that and have it more of a, an event center, which is currently in the zoning code. Um, and, and reference to that, they also wa, requested a restriction of no more than 60 events per calendar year with 150 people or less per event, and as well as to restrict the event days to weekends and holidays between April 15th and November 15th. Uh, both of those requests were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the plans themselves, um, they show with the approval of the unmodified driveway access points, they do show two different pull-offs for, for the driveway. So because the driveway is so narrow, they wanted to provide accommodations for people entering and leaving at the same time. Uh, so two pull-offs are shown, uh, one being here and one being here. Those are going to be added to the property in conjunction with this site plan. As you can see, the driveway does meander away from this N V strip of property, so it does move onto neighboring properties. Uh, easements for those areas are going to be required before final approval can be granted, um, and the owners are, are well aware of that at this point. So if we go back to the meat of the development, so, uh, the proposed parking pad located here is going to be cut into the side of the hill. Um, so a retaining wall will be established on the west side of that parking pad. The existing manor house, which is here, this is the existing brick house. More information on the use of that may be provided, but at, at this point, it was relayed to me that, uh, it, it's still up in the air, i, if that's going to be utilized with this or not. Again, that may be, um, more defined at this point since that was relayed. And so just moving on to the review side of things, uh, comprehensive planning found the project to be consistent with all applicable pans and policies. Uh, the zoning administration has no additional comments on the concept plan. Engineering review has no additional comments, um, with the exception of awaiting response from the Department of Public Works regarding a waiver for the driveway apron. So, uh, if we go back to the driveway here, as you can see, the, the full extent of the end of the driveway is off of the subject property. It's on the neighbor's property. So the driveway apron, per county standards, has to be paved, so the owner will pave that portion of driveway apron within county right of way. Uh, but once it gets to that private property owner's, um, line, they do not want any modification on their property. And so that paving is going to end and then turn to gravel. Uh, because that's still technically part of the apron, a request was made to the public works to allow for that. Um, I, I'm not sure if that's been finalized at this point, but that is, uh, I believe in their, their departments for, for discussion and determination. Uh, fire protection has approved this concept plan as designed. Uh, the site is outside the jurisdiction of the Bureau of Utilities, but the health department has approved the plans, uh, with the water and sewer. Um, so looking at the plan again, uh, one item that is going to be required is the septic system area, so, um, a, a replacement area, and that is shown within the easement area, I believe. Mouth had, uh, reviewed that and the advisory board, the land preservation advisory board, as well as mouth, had approved that with the requirement that it be a deep trench system. Um, so that's shown within the existing easement, but it is permitted, uh, following their approval of that. Again, with the requirement that it be a, a deep trench system. Stormwater management has granted concept approval of the plan, so, uh, it'll primarily be held handled via the submerged gravel wetland that's shown on the property. The grading office and soil conservation has approved the concept plan. Uh, water resource management has granted concept approval of the plan. Uh, the project is exempt from floodplain requirements. Landscape requirements have been addressed by the inclusion of plantings around the, the dumpster area. So again, that dumpster area is shown here, and there will be plantings surrounding that required by the landscape manual. And then you can also see some trees speckled throughout the, the parking areas as well. Uh, the final plans will show an area of retention slash conservation easement, uh, within the property's existing forested areas. Uh, and then finally, the final state plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities, a, as with every state plan that, that's brought before the commission. And so before we move on to, to any questions, just to, to show how the property looks or will look, um, so this is the restroom trailer, uh, again, and this is the, um, the pole barn style roof that will cover that. Uh, this is the event tent down on the bottom here. And then looking at the property itself, so this is the brick, um, manor house here. Uh, this is the existing barn, and, and this is the, the drive that you can see. And, and this area is where the event tent, the parking are to be located. A couple more shots of that. Again, this is the existing house, this is the existing barn, and this is, um, next to that barn is where most of this is being proposed. And then looking down at Old Bachman Valley Road, um, um, the bottom one is looking left, the right one is, or the top right one is looking right. Uh, this is an existing sign for the Manor at River Run. And this picture on the top left is looking back onto the property. So if you ever ridden on this road and you look down the property driveway, so the driveway itself is roughly a half mile long, and it, it goes up to a crest and, and then goes back down. So this is standing on top of that crest, uh, more or less midpoint of the driveway, looking back at the subject property.
But you can't see the subject property.
Right.
David, do you have a, a copy of the letter of approval from, from Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation? And, and is that it? Are there detailed conditions in that letter?
I can check and see if we have it in the file. Um, I, I, I don't have it with me per se, um, but I can check and see if it's something that's included in the file, or Mr. Schaefer may.
I don't have it, but the only one we're aware of is deep trench.
And it tested for deep trench to be.
And it, in other words, yeah, their, their only, uh, condition was that it be deep trench, I assume because you can farm over deep trench. Um, even though this is not gonna be farm ground. You can see how the ag, the ag easement is cut up here. I don't know how that happened, but it probably wasn't while you were there.
Didn't happen when I was there.
Yeah, it, it's all cut up so that just pieces of this.
That's the old Royer Shipley property, right? Royer Ship, yeah, okay. I know the property very well. Could you, could you get a le, approval letter for me?
Yes.
David, for us?
Yes.
I appreciate it.
I think that's very achievable to get that, that letter.
Okay. Uh, and then this, just a second question. The pull-off on the driveway, the driveway will still be eight and a half feet wide with two pull-off areas that are on mouth easement property, subject to an easement to, is that correct?
The easement does run on this little strip of land here. Um, the pull-offs are shown within this strip of land, so I, I would agree that it, it is under that same easement overlay.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Robertson, it's not, excuse me, the driveway isn't in its entire length, eight feet. It just, at some point, it chokes down to eight feet, so that was the minimum that we were.
So some of that driveway is on easement property, some of it is not, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that what I'm seeing here?
That's correct.
Trying to figure out.
And the owner is working with the adjacent property owner to secure an easement for that portion that's off the, outside of the strip.
Okay.
So how wide is the driveway? Is it?
It goes from like, it goes from like 18 feet down to like eight feet. It, it's, you know, it's an old stone drive that just over time has just grown and shrunk.
It's gonna stay a stone drive?
Correct.
Are you studying? Any questions?
Is that a historic building? Is the, uh, the manor?
Yeah, the, uh, yes, it is. The, uh, the house was built in, we think, 1861. So it's, it's an historic house. I've got a, I've got a driveway detail here if you wanted to look at it. But it's, it's represented there, it's just that this is more detailed.
You don't have any plans to use the manor house?
They live in, the family.
Yeah, we're actually working with permits right now. It, you know, the, the issue is handicapped. It, you know, the issue is handicap accessibility. So obviously, that can be very expensive, trying to retrofit that with an old house. So we're working with permits to try to make the house accessible, and we hope that we're able to achieve that, and we'll show that on the final plan.
Steve?
No, I'm familiar with where the property is and everything, but I don't want to have anything to add.
Man, I'll just say, I mean, for the most part, these kind of facilities are very beautiful when they're done. You know, cash flow wise, I wonder how they work sometimes with so many of them in the county now. But, yes, I would imagine the barn that's there now is going to get fixed up quite a bit. So, I mean, I think they're really nice.
No, no thoughts about lighting that driveway? Or any, you know, along the way, since it is so long? And with, you know, what'd you say, expect 150 guests per? Is there any need for that?
We could take, we could look at it, to your point, it would be helpful. I think, based on my limited understanding of this process, I think we're going to hit issues with having the lights terminated at the, at the property within a certain area, like what the restrictions are for the lighting, so that may restrict how far up we can go, but we can take a look.
We've been in regular communication with John Myers and family, for the obvious reason that the driveway is located partly on his land. And we're sensitive to his concerns that it be still available for his agricultural access. And in fact, that, that's the reason we've, we've asked for a waiver from, from engineering, because they said, "We want a full commercial entrance here." curb and gutter, you know, da-da-da-da-da. And we're like, "On Bachman Valley Road, I mean, it'll be, no, we want it." So when we talked to Mr. Myers and family, his daughters, they said, "We can't, we can't use that for agricultural access." So, so now we're at rolled curbs, and they, they're okay with that. And that's what we're getting the okay from engineering to put. So we've got an agreement, in principle anyway, on the type of entrance, and we also have an agreement on a reciprocal easement, so that the portion of the driveway, which is, you know, 100 years, so it's well beyond the 20-year prescriptive easement period, so that both parties can memorialize in a recorded instrument that where it is now, it has the right to be. In other words, we have the right to be on the portion of the driveway that's on his property, and he has the right to be on the portion of the driveway that's on our strip of land. So.
You, you talked about an eas, you're talking about a, a permanent right-of-way.
Yeah.
But not an easement?
A right-of-way is an easement.
Well.
It's a particular kind of easement.
Yes, it is.
People refer to it as shorthand, meaning an ingress, egress, regress, but it's an easement, yeah.
Okay.
And so if I may chime in, I looked through the file that we have here. I don't have any formal letter approving the, the septic reserve in the ag land preservation easement. I do have email correspondence in there from Michelle Cable of the foundation, who acknowledges that easement, acknowledges that it has to be a deep trench system, but I don't have a formal letter. Again, that is something that I, I think could be obtainable.
Well, you mentioned the advisory board, that's why I'm trying to understand how, how Michelle, if you can find an approval, I'd appreciate it. We'll just leave it at that right now, David.
No problem.
Thank you.
Nothing? Okay. Anything else from you all?
You know, yeah, you know, I have to say something.
Really would.
You know, this is an example of a beautiful, almost ideal site for this kind of use. It's historic, it's tucked back in a, as David pointed out, you can't see it from the road, so the lighting and effects on other people, the sound is somewhat attenuated, et cetera. The buildings are beautiful. And furthermore, it's an example, in my opinion, of a, a new use which really allows the preservation of an agricultural-like entity, which otherwise, it's not farmable. I mean, it's been cut up so much, and this is 28 acres, okay? It's not like somebody's going to buy it for a farm. So this hopefully generates enough income. And this is a family that bought this, Ashley's family, and had this dream for now five years now, or four years now. And then, and then they found out how much the stormwater management cost, over $200,000 to put in stormwater management. And, but, and then they got caught in the catch-22, in a way, of, "You've got a BZA approval for an event facility." "Yeah, that's correct." And they didn't put any conditions on you. "Yeah, that's right, but, you know, we're only going to operate in this, you know, the good months, and it's going to be in winter." They go, "Well," and then the reviewers, especially the traffic reviewers, and the reviewers go, "Well, we have to assume that you will have 365 events a year with 300 people, you know, or 200 people." That's how, "No, no, we won't do that." "Well, we have to assume you will, therefore, where's your commercial entrance?" Da-da-da-da-da. So we've, that's the reason, one of the reasons for this back and forth in the BZA and the zoning administrator. The driveway's been historic, we, it's perfect, not perfect for us, because people that come to these events, they're looking for a little rustic. Now, I'm not saying, you know, and plus, does anybody in their right mind, you know, want like an 18-foot wide paved driveway back there? Ah, it doesn't fit. So, so that's, that's where this is, and it struggled mightily to get to this point. It's a wonderful use of that property, and as you can see, and we've got a couple more items to work out, but we think it's a, you know, a nice project that the county should like to have. And if you go back, if, I don't, you know, if you go back there, this house is beautiful. The photo doesn't do justice to it. It's a beautiful old, old property, and as I say, it's tucked down. So we appreciate your concerns and look for any more feedback you want to give us. And we'd ask that you, if you feel it is appropriate, delegate to Chair the final site plan, so we, so we can move through a little faster. We're operating on temporary permits now, which we appreciate the county, what, 10 or 12 events a year? 12 events a year, which is allowing the family to keep their head above water financially. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay. Seeing, excuse me.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Should we have a discussion about designating to the Chair first, or just make that part of the motion?
Do we? Are you?
Does anybody have a problem?
So this is con, this is a concept, if, so.
This is concept.
Are we making a motion?
We don't need a motion.
You should, if you, if you want to delegate the approval to the Chair, you should make that motion.
Okay. So.
Anybody?
I, I think Ralph still wants to see some paperwork.
Well, I mean, if the rest of the group is comfortable with where we're at, I'm not going to hold it up for that.
I'm not going to make a motion.
Just don't quite understand the procedure.
Right.
That went toward this, so it has nothing to do with you. I'm just very curious about how MAF or the local advisory board arbitrarily made a decision on a, on a MAF easement, the way they did. That's, that's my question, so that hardly.
Hopefully, when you see the record, you'll realize it wasn't arbitrary. When you see.
Sorry?
I say, hopefully, when you see the letter, you'll realize it was not arbitrary.
That's, that's sort of what I'm getting at here. Because the concept of what you're doing, wanting to do here, I, you know, go for it.
Yeah, your perseverance has been incredible so far.
Thank you.
But unfortunately, we, we need to see that ag-pres letter and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and it sounds like you're looking to possibly do something with the house that'll be on the final plan.
Correct.
And David could just go add something to that. You know, this is adding work for you, but if they don't have a letter, MAF, I'd like to see one.
So I'll mention, an angel came down at your request.
What a looking angel.
And I, okay. I have that letter that you've requested, I'd be happy to.
Look.
Once legal counsel looks at it, I'll, I'll be happy to bring it up too.
Thanks.
Meets your approval, sir.
That, that was a process that was undertaken by, I think, Ashley and family to get that approval.
I, I think, I think we would still like to see the final plan. We shouldn't have any issues to hold it up, but with making some changes with the house, I think we'd like to see that on there too.
Okay, so Clark, you, you read this.
I just, just, yes.
So I'll just, I'll just read something here, this is why I was wondering about. It says, "If an overlay easement becomes necessary in the future, then review of such draft easement shall be provided, so it may be reviewed and approved by the Office of the Attorney General." So you're saying, David, that an overlay easement is not, would not be required here, or not even be?
For the septic area.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't believe an easement would be required, no, because it would be used by the same entity.
Okay, Madam Chairman, then my, my questions have been answered.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You have something to say?
Why don't we approve it and have it approved?
By me?
Yeah.
I would second it.
Need a motion. Yeah, I don't see what the problem is at this point.
No.
Make the motion.
I have no objection either.
I'll make the motion that we allow you to approve, approve the final concept plan.
I'll second.
Roll call, vote, roll call. There you go.
Thank you. Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
No.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Soysen?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon? Madam Chair, let the record reflect, we have four yays and one nay.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We are recess. We'll take a 10, 10-minute recess.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect, we have four yeas and one nay.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll take a ten-minute recess.[286.95]
Okay, we are back in session. And welcome. Legislative wrap-up.
Good morning, and I can say good morning because now I'm not on the agenda for the afternoon.
There you go.
So what you should have in front of you, I put together a wrap-up of the legislation that we reviewed at the February meeting. So signee/die, the end of the legislative session this year was April 7th, so that was Monday a week ago. And we're still trying to get a handle on what some of the bills mean for us that were passed. But I'm going to go through quickly the bills that did pass that we looked at in February. So, and again, you'll hear more about it as things come to you and need to be implemented, like zoning changes. So if you look at the handout, you'll see green and you'll see red. The red bills with the thumbs down did not pass, and so we don't really need to worry about those. The bills that are green with the thumbs up did pass, and some have implications and some do not for what the Planning Commission does. So the first one is the SB 266, and that changed the law to, from the eight planning principles that were required to be in the comprehensive plans or the county master plan, to a set of 12 planning visions. I mean, reverse that. 12 visions now are eight planning principles. And that's fairly benign, but as the master plan proceeds, you may be needing to look at that in terms of the new planning principles instead of the 12 visions. The next one, SB 635, Wildlife Protections and Highway Crossings. The reason that that's even on here is because it does reference that this needs to be considered as when the comprehensive plan is updated. So at some point, again during the master plan process, the bill is effective on July 1st. So during the master plan process, the wildlife movement and habitat connectivity will need to be considered. It doesn't say what you need to do with it, but it needs to be considered as part of the plan update process. I'm not going to go over all of the bills that didn't pass, but I will point out the one at the bottom of the page, the Housing for Jobs Act, that was a biggie for us this year. And that, one of the big land planning bills. But that did not pass very unexpectedly, so I would expect to see it come up again. But for this year, it did not pass. However, if you flip the page, on top of page two, you see SB 891, which is the bill related to accessory dwelling units. So this one did pass, and this is going to require that jurisdictions allow accessory dwelling units anywhere where a single-family dwelling unit is allowed or exists. So even if it's a zone where we wouldn't normally allow a single-family house, if there's one there that is, say, non-conforming use, chances are we're going to have to let them have an ADU there as well. So-
Is that attached or detached?
This bill says it can be either.
Okay.
So what we're going to need to amend the code to change some of, first of all, where it's allowed is different than what we allow now. And there may be some, there's some other requirements that are a little different that we have to look at a little more closely and see whether we need to change them. It doesn't, you know, like, they allow up to 75% of the principal dwelling unit for the size of it, ADU. Well, if it's a 4,000-square-foot house, do we want them to have 3,000-square-foot ADU? That's not, I'm not sure that really meets the intention of an ADU. But whether or not we have to allow that, or we can still have something a little tighter like we have now, we need to figure that out. And we expect, hopefully, that Department of Housing/Community Development will provide guidance on it, like they did with the housing bill last year.
Help me out here, Brenda. Accessory dwelling units require a common septic or a separate septic system then? What an accessory dwelling?
If it's attached, and I'm not, I don't know 100% the answer to that question. But if it's attached, I'm pretty sure it can be on the same septic, but that septic has to have the capacity for it.
Right.
I'm not sure if it's detached, whether it can be on the same one, or if it has, or if it can be, it has to be a separate.
So we're going to have to amend our current zoning requirement or requirements to help mitigate this? Is that what you're saying?
So for one thing, like, there are certain places where we have to be, they have to be able to subdivide a lot in order to get it. And according to this, they won't have to do that. So, yeah, there are some things we'll have to amend, and it'll be allowed in more places, more ways.
Okay. Okay, enough said about that. Deal with that later.
Okay, so the next couple bills that we had looked at in February did not pass. The next one that did pass is on page three, SB 931, HB 1036, which is the Renewable Energy Certainty Act and relates to solar facility siting. Again, this was one of the biggest bills for us this year in terms of impact to what our department does and the county. So what it, this bill's very complicated. It's 38 pages. We really need to take a deeper dive into what it's going to mean in terms of what changes we need to make or don't make. And even the dates of effectiveness are confusing. But essentially, it sets up, so a community solar energy generating system. If you don't know much about what they are, it's essentially a system that's set up for subscription, purpose of subscription. So I can live, you know, over here, and the facility can be over here, and I subscribe to it without having to have the solar on my property. I get the benefit of the solar energy. So you subscribe, you get a credit on your bill. That's basically how the community solar facility works. And they are under five megawatts. They can't be over five megawatts. So now what this bill does is it kind of makes a distinction between community solar facilities that are under two megawatts and community solar facilities that are between two and five megawatts. And what it says is, it sets up all these siting criteria. If you recall, we did a zoning amendment in the fall that kind of set up some standards for how solar facilities in any of our zones would be, like, requirements for siting. So setbacks and height and, you know, landscaping, all of that stuff. What this bill does is, the distinction is that the solar facilities between two and five megawatts are specifically called distributed generation facilities. And they set up a CPCN. The CPCN is the sort of permit, if you will, that a facility needs to get from the Maryland Public Service Commission in order to be approved to construct the facility. And typically, if it was over two megawatts, you needed to get the CPCN from the Maryland Public Service Commission. So what this does is, for community solar facilities between two and five megawatts, they will have a special CPCN for them that has a sort of different expedited process than the facilities over five megawatts that need to get a CPCN. So it has all this siting criteria that, you know, siting and design requirements that they are setting up that will be standard across the board for any facilities that they, that fit here, that they review and approve. So that's kind of, what it does is basically tell us that we can't prohibit solar anywhere. You know, these facilities, we have to allow these facilities anywhere, including the ag and conservation zone. So it preempts our local zoning in that regard. And then once these siting and design requirements are in place, then we'll also have to follow those requirements. What happens in the meantime, we're not sure yet. Like, again, we need to take a deeper look and really get some clarification on a lot of questions that we have on this bill. But so-
So I see that it's capped solar at 5% within the priority preservation areas. Is the ag-pres program we have, is that considered a priority preservation area?
A part of it is. So a priority preservation area is something that was-
Straight answer.
There's never a straight answer when it comes to state law. So the priority preservation area is a specific area the county required by state law. We have to define this area that supposedly we are prioritizing for preservation, for ag preservation. And that's actually a requirement in order to get certified to have our ag-pres program. Like, you need to have that in order, you know, be eligible for malfunds or anything else related to having our ag-pres program with the state. But because there's criteria for setting up the PPA, the entire county is not a PPA. It's primarily the sort of northwest area of the county. But we still implement our program anywhere that's outside of the designated growth areas and, you know, meets the other criteria of the programs.
Seems like a lot of, I don't know if power is the word, but I'll use it, is being granted to the PSC on a lot of this stuff, so.
That is accurate.
Know how that rolls.
Yes.
Okay.
So on this, just to make this clear, 5% would be, but a 100-acre farm, 5% of the 100 acres. Is that what we're hearing?
Well, it doesn't specify individual properties. It's the PPA as a whole.
But it says, oh. 5% of the entire area?
That's what it, how it reads in the bill.
So if the priority preservation area is 14,000 acres, it'd be 5% of 14,000 acres.
Right. And it doesn't really have a lot of language about easements that already exist. So if our easements, you know, we assume that that is off limits, then they have to find that 5% on properties that don't already have easement.
There's no priority, within the priority preservation areas of trying to put these solar panels on areas that are not farmable. So it does, so you can, according to this, if anybody comes in and wants to put it in the middle of their best field, there's nothing we can do about it, as long as it's part of the 5%.
There's very little further information or provisions about this in the bill.
The only limiting factor here is the amount of megawatts. This is a bad bill.
That five megawatts is related to Tier 1 and 2 growth areas, which is the municipalities and designated growth areas. So it doesn't even apply out in the PPA. Yes, it is a bad bill. Better than it was when it was introduced, but, so, like I said, there's a lot of different effective dates, and we really have to figure out what, like, what we're going to have to do, what this is going to mean for Planning Commission review, all of this stuff. It's a 38-page bill, so it's going to take us a little time to get some clarification on these things, but it will impact.
Time is of the essence because it takes effect July 1st.
So this is one where you pass the bill and then put all the regulations in later?
Yes.
So that we don't know what it really means.
Yeah, the regulations, yeah.
A lot of them, I know that. Yeah, I'm being facetious, in a real way.
It will still have to go through the site plan review process. But what that means for what the Planning Commission can require then versus what you have in the past, we still have to figure that out. All we know is it has to be an expedited review process, but they don't define that, so we're not, we might already have an expedited review process, but since they don't define it, again, that's something else we have to figure out, too, so. So that's the biggie. Of the rest of the bills, we've got page five is HB 628, and it relates to sidewalks and bicycle paths. This is, I don't think it really affects the Planning Commission too much. It was on here because it's related to something you might look at. But it's related to counties that have this Vision Zero program, which is related to motor vehicle fatalities. County Sheriff's Office has adopted this program, so, again, it's being implemented at some level in this county. I'm not sure whether it will impact you. And then the last one that passed of what we had on your radar prior is on the last page, SB 944, and this relates to housing development permits and local reporting requirements. And essentially, so you have to approve the annual report that goes to Maryland Department of Planning every year, and this requires additional information to be included in that report. So when the staff puts together this report, it's going to include more information that you have to review to approve. So that's the essential, how it impacts the Planning Commission. More to look at before you approve it. Any questions?
I don't see any, but thank you for following them and letting us know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, any public comment for legislative wrap-up?
There's no public.
None. No, there is a public. One. Okay. On to 14. Master Plan Summary on Open House Feedback.
I think I should be okay with this. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to give an overview of the different types of feedback that we've received over the course of the last, really kind of, six to eight months. This is what we call the assessment phase of the master plan update process. And there were a couple of different ways that we solicited feedback from the public on different things. And I wanted to give you kind of a, an overview of what that was and give us an opportunity to have a little discussion on it. Let me just find my presentation here. And hopefully, you also received a copy of the, of the report that we put together. We'll put all of this online for anybody who wants to take a look at it online. I'm going to go over some highlights from that report, and I really encourage you to take some time to read everything. In the report, we provided not only summaries and highlights from the feedback that we received, but also many of the, well, all of the verbatim responses that we got from people. So you've got about 30-odd pages of direct feedback from the general public that I want to make sure is available to you and that you have an opportunity to look through, since what I'm providing here is really just kind of a summary, trying to find the common themes and conclusions that we can draw from that feedback. All right, so, as I mentioned, we're wrapping up the assessment phase of this process. And that phase of our work is really meant to answer the starting question, which is, where are we now? So as we're going through this update process, we want to make sure that we have a good understanding of our starting point, because it's hard to say where we want to go from here without a good understanding of where we're starting. That phase has included a number of consultations, a lot of background data collection and sharing, which is a lot of what we've been doing with you over the last several months, and feedback gathering, which is what I'm going to focus on with this presentation. Specifically, we'll talk about the public outreach and engagement. So during the assessment phase, there were a number of things that we did to try to connect with the public and get their initial take on things. The first was an initial survey that we used to really help us affirm the direction that things were starting to head in. So we had some initial work sessions with the Board of County Commissioners, with you all. We did a joint work session. We got some general direction out of those, and we wanted to kind of test that with the general public. So we put out an initial survey, and I'll go into a little bit of what we found from those responses. Some other things that we used as public outreach and engagement included tabling at a couple of fall events. We launched the master plan website, which has been a key source of information and feedback gathering. We've had regular social media pushes to help drive people to the content on the website and promote things like our open house events. And then, of course, we had our five open houses just in February and March to share information, answer questions, get some early input from folks. And I'll dive deeper into what we heard at those as well. We also launched the inaugural Citizens Planning Academy in March, which we're hoping is helping to form folks to be more fully engaged in not only the master plan, but any other public processes that the county undertakes. And then we are heading into the next phase of this project, which is the direction-setting phase. So really trying to figure out, not just where we are now, but then where we want to be headed. And that's the development of different recommendations and things like that for you to consider, including in the master plan. So that really is going to involve these three work groups that we've been forming and also wrapping into that some specific youth engagement activities that we've got planned. So that's all sort of coming up. I have on this, just for anybody who might be listening, a few ways to participate. These are the events that we've been putting on, but there's also opportunities for people to simply sign up to receive updates on the master plan. Folks can volunteer for a work group, as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. Those applications are open through the end of this week. We encourage everybody to spread the word among family and friends about what we're doing with the master plan and to track along with the discussions, either online or in person. And definitely attend future public meetings and hearings. All right. For our initial online survey, we wanted to undertake this as a way, as I mentioned, to kind of do a gut check on some of what we were hearing from the commissioners and you all as Planning Commission members, to say, you know, we've kind of honed in on these five driving ideas as the primary things to cover in the master plan. Does the public agree? Are these the things that are most important to them? And if there are some additional focus areas, let's hear about what those might be. We created two different survey options that people could take. One was an open-ended format, where people could answer questions, the same questions that we provided to you and the commissioners in our work sessions. They could answer those in their own words. We also used the feedback that we gathered at those work sessions to create a multiple-choice format that would give people a little bit, a little bit faster way to provide their responses. But even the multiple-choice format had some places where folks could select other and write in their own, write in their own words what their responses to some of those questions would be. This was launched with the master plan website launch in October, and it was available through that interface between October and January of this year. And we tried to push that out as much as we could through Facebook posts, different meeting announcements. We shared the information with municipalities and community groups and asked them to share it within their networks to get as many responses as we could. We received 109 open-ended survey responses and 384 multiple-choice survey responses. And just to give you a sense of what some of the response demographics were, you can see on these two tables that age-wise, the respondents were pretty diverse in age. We had smaller numbers of folks who were under 30 or over 80. And our largest demographic group responding to the survey was folks who were in their 60s. As far as where the survey respondents lived, it was mostly people in the Eldersburg and Westminster zip codes. So those are the first three in that table there, so that accounts for about almost 60% of the responses. But we did have responses from all over the county. Okay, a few highlights of what we heard from people. In general, we had two key areas where there was really strong support that just kind of showed up over and over again, not just in the written responses, but also in the, in the multiple-choice answers. And those two key areas were a commitment to continuing ag-lan preservation in the county and supporting a rural lifestyle and the rural economy. And the other one was managing growth in a responsible manner. So making sure that when growth occurs, that it's done in a supportable fashion, that the public services and facilities are provided concurrent with that development so it doesn't overwhelm our ability to maintain a high quality of service. The greatest concerns that people expressed were related to the capacity in and quality of our schools, addressing capacity of water and sewer, and trying to prevent or improve areas that currently experience traffic congestion. One area that I want to highlight as a, potentially a new focus area that did not receive as much discussion in the work sessions with you all and the commissioners, but is a big priority for people that we heard in our outreach, was support for providing parks, recreational facilities, walking trails, bicycle pedestrian facilities. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in particular. Other things we heard were strong support for economic development with the caveat that it's located appropriately, and a big interest in attracting the kinds of industries that would provide employment for county residents. That's kind of aligned with the skill set and the education of folks who live here. Because as we've seen in some prior presentations, there is a big mismatch in terms of commuting patterns, a lot of people going out of the county for employment, as well as people- as well as people coming into the county from surrounding jurisdictions for employment here. And I will also say that we noted a big geographic difference in some of the responses. So a lot of people who are in the southern Carroll area feel very strongly that the southern part of the county cannot absorb more growth, and they really are interested in seeing land that's undeveloped in that area prioritized for protection or preservation. Moving on to our open houses, why and how we reached out. The big thing was we wanted to be able to share information with general public about the driving ideas, to really give them access to the information that supports those concepts, that will help us build them out a little bit more in terms of recommendations. We wanted to provide a forum for folks to engage with staff in conversation around those areas, and to answer any questions that they had. We also prioritized trying to get early input on issues that matter the most to people, and the things that they want to see addressed in the Master We did this by holding five community open houses, so one in each Commissioner district, and those were mostly at the public libraries. They were the same content at each of the open houses, and they were designed to be drop-in type of events. So you could, folks could come in anytime between 1:00 and 7:00 p.m., whatever time was convenient for them, whatever location was convenient for them. We also made sure that we had a full set of digital materials and an online commenting option for anybody who either couldn't make it to an open house and still wanted to review what was being presented, make some comments, or if they came to an open house but needed to sort of mull things over before they made their comments. As I mentioned, we held these during the month of February and the first couple of weeks in March. We really tried to promote those through a news release, multiple Facebook posts. We created Facebook events, Nextdoor posts. We did a direct mailing to, or emailing to about 2,300 subscribers. So those are folks who've signed up to receive various types of communication from the county, either Master Plan-specific, or even like following specific Commissioners. And as we did with the survey, we made announcements about the open houses at meetings. We shared the information with municipalities and community groups, and encouraged them to use their networks to get the word out. We posted flyers in libraries, churches, businesses. And the informal survey that we took of folks at the open houses asking where they got their information really showed that people, all of these techniques are important and necessary, because some people got things from Facebook, some people got them from the email, some people saw a flyer in their church, or heard it from a neighbor. So we really are striving to make sure, however people get their information, we can try to touch them. And we got some good ideas for additional ways to reach out in the future. Just to give you a sense of how we organized things, the open houses were oriented around the driving ideas by way of several stations that we set up, so we could kind of focus on housing, or economic development, rural issues, or infrastructure, or working together. We also had two additional stations. We had a welcome station, and we had an exit station. So the welcome station gave people an orientation to the event and the Master Plan update process, as well as the driving ideas in general. We also had approved plans and plan maps there, a zoning map, so people could just use those as reference. And this was where we asked for folks to give us a sense of where they came from. We found that about a third of the attendees at each open house actually came from outside of that particular Commissioner district. So what that says to me is that our effort to make these as accessible to folks by offering the same content at different locations allowed them to come to the location that was easiest for them, most convenient for them. So I think that was successful. On this slide, I just have a couple of questions. I'm not going to go through them all, but these were the questions that we were hoping folks would give some thought to in terms of what they were commenting on. We really just wanted to get a sense of what people like and don't like in these different driving areas, as well as areas where they might have specific comments or specific recommendations related to any of the driving ideas. And then at the exit station, we did have a survey about the event, so we could track how successful they were, how well we did in terms of meeting some of our objectives, and encouraged people to sign up for Master Plan updates, so we can continue to build the network of communication that we're using. We also had two computer stations set up there that really helped answer some very property-specific questions that people had. So I'm going to, the way I'm going to go through this is give you kind of a high-level overview of some common themes that we heard, and then we'll go through each driving idea individually. So in terms of what we heard, first of all, we had about 280 people attend our open houses, which I thought was an excellent turnout, especially despite some of the challenging weather situations. We received over 200 comments as a result of the open houses, and our largest open house was the one held down in Eldersburg, where we had about 100 people As you go through the feedback report, you'll see that for each of the driving ideas, we created sort of a mini-report, and that identifies some common themes, action items that might have come out of the comments that we received, and just some kind of concluding thoughts. I want to highlight the fact that the action items, I don't want to go into at this time, because what we tried to do is make under the four implementing categories of land use recommendations, regulatory changes, policies, or capital, or financial investment. We tried to identify things that people suggested that were very specific actionable items. Those are things that we want to put into the mix when we get to that point in our process. Right now, we're not there yet. That's part of the direction-setting phase of things. So we'll just hold those for now, and those will be wrapped into some future In terms of themes that cut across multiple driving ideas, we did have several that showed up repeatedly. As I mentioned before, there is a lot of support for providing sidewalks, trails, and bike paths. This was a commonly-posted comment under the infrastructure driving idea, but it also showed up in housing as far as helping to create healthy communities, communities where people like to live, because they have lots of things that they can do, as well as the Working Together Station, where some recognition was given to needing to work with multiple agencies to address maybe inter-county types of recreational The second one was schools. This was a huge concern for people throughout all of the open houses, with a big emphasis on concern about providing adequate funding for the schools, and improving the condition of our existing school buildings. This showed up in the infrastructure station, as well as housing and Working Together, and folks who might have said, checked the other box in terms of whatever comments they wanted to For infrastructure, it was primarily geared towards, you know, addressing the facilities themselves. But in the housing station, the emphasis was on the relationship between having good schools and the reasons why people choose to live in the county, or want to live in the county, and the need to kind of maintain that connection. Water and sewer infrastructure also was noted at several stations, including infrastructure, as well as economy and housing. So the connection between, people were making the connection between adequate water and sewer facilities, and the ability to, say, attract businesses to the area, or to provide housing opportunities, additional housing opportunities for folks. Roads was also, as you might have imagined, a big comment area at the infrastructure station, but also economy and housing as well. Again, noticing the interconnectedness of some of our public facilities with the ability to thrive in those other areas. And then two very specific types of uses that seemed to come up at multiple stations. One was the need for more medical facilities throughout the county, but in Mount Airy in particular. We heard a lot of people who have difficulty getting to specific types of medical facilities, the distance they need to travel, those sorts of things. And then the other specific use related to solar or energy in general. This crapped up at several stations, including the economy, the rural station, and the Working Together. We heard a little bit of a mixed bag. We heard a lot of no solar on ag land, a lot of resistance to the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project. But we also did have comments from people saying, "Let's increase the opportunity for renewable energy sources. Let's promote the idea that you can have some sustainable energy sources in the county." So it was a little bit of a mixed bag. Okay, before I go on to the individual station summaries, I do just want to wrap up the overview here with some of the lessons that we learned from our exit surveys. And this is something that I did not put together a slide on, but I did want to mention. So the exit station had an exit survey for people to provide their feedback on the event itself. We got about 61 responses, and the overwhelming number of people, 98% of the respondents, felt that they had an excellent or good overall experience. And there was also strong agreement that the information presented at each station was clear and helpful in understanding the Master Plan. A few of the things that people mentioned we could do to improve the experience for the future was to provide maps and information at a larger scale. We were trying to put a lot of information into a small space, and we recognized that that was overwhelming for some people and difficult to read. So we'll work on that in the future. We also received suggestions to create maybe a video or a presentation that people could look at to give the big picture of things. Providing more detailed information on specific things like water and sewer service areas was mentioned, as well as providing more information on the impact of the current Master Plan. And then a few other things related to better advertising and possible representation from state agencies who could help answer questions as well. And I do just want to note that several people made the comment that they had no suggestions for improvement because they thought the events were very informative and well-done. Okay, let's take a look at the responses that we heard at each of these stations. As I mentioned, the reports that you have for each of them, which start on page 29 of the overall report, is broken into common themes, action items, and conclusions. And I'm just going to focus on some of the common themes and some conclusions. For the Housing for Households of All Kinds Station, there were four key themes that seemed to unite some of the comments. The first was a need to provide more affordable housing options. Specifically, people were looking at affordable housing options for young professionals, service workers, and seniors or retirees. This was mostly in response to the fact that current housing prices are so high, which makes it difficult for people in certain income brackets or certain age groups to afford to live here or to relocate. There was support for mixed-income housing as a way to address some of the housing needs in the county, and some concern that if we don't address housing needs of folks who are not in the upper echelons of the income brackets, that will leave a lot of residents without viable housing options. We also heard some desire for smaller home options. So this could be apartments, smaller lot sizes, mixed-use zoning. There was also support for things like accessory dwelling units as an option, especially for providing some multi-generational types of living arrangements. Senior housing as an option was also another commonly noted comment. People expressed a desire for affordable and accessible senior housing options that would include senior housing communities, single-level homes for aging in place, and multi-unit retirement housing. And again, the high cost of housing was noted as a real reason why some of those options are needed. And then the fourth thing was a common theme around slowing, or limiting, or stopping the development of housing altogether. This was especially prevalent in the South Carroll area, as well as along some of our major routes like 26 and 91. There is concern over traffic congestion, over school capacity, over the strains on the infrastructure system that kind of undergirded those comments. There was also a desire to continue to maintain the county's rural character, in the sense that additional housing, additional development would erode that. So a few conclusions we can draw are that there are mixed and often opposing opinions on housing needs in the county, both in terms of the type of housing that's needed and the location. And this is going to be, I think, one of the big things we're going to have to grapple with in the Master Plan, is how to sort of balance some of these competing and sometimes contradictory feelings of folks. As far as the feedback... As far as the feedback we received at the economy station, those focused on five areas. The first was increasing economic development opportunities and activity. A big interest in increasing the land that's available for economic development and support for small and medium sized businesses. So, not necessarily gigantic corporations coming in with a huge footprint, but something that's more consistent with some of the sort of small town and rural character of the county. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of support for providing space for medical services, medical facilities was expressed. The second one was specific geographic areas for economic development activities. So, as people were commenting on the need for additional land, there were some suggestions for where that could be. Areas along the 140 corridor in Westminster and east of the city were noted, as was Maryland 27, sort of between Taylorsville and Mount Airy. At the same time, we heard some resistance to those areas, particularly in the vicinity of Maryland 27 and the need to keep that a two lane road and not load up traffic or contribute to congestion on that corridor. Energy generation was also a theme in the economy feedback boards, particularly around wind and solar energy. As I mentioned, sometimes these comments were in conflict with each other. So, some people felt that there was good potential for exploring these as alternative forms of local energy generation. Others felt like that was, that was going to be an intrusion on the landscape that folks didn't want to see. There were a number of quality of life comments on the economy boards that made this connection between economic development and a high quality of life here in Carroll. So, support for quality schools that would train up the workforce, prepare folks to be engaged in different industries in the county. Lot of support for the Career and Technology Center and possibly using that as a community resource after hours. There was a lot, again, a lot of emphasis on parks and trails and walking facilities that would provide a high quality of life that would be attractive to employers. But then also this theme of wanting to balance economic development and the need for creating new areas for economic development with maintaining the county's rural character. And then the last thematic area for economic development related to providing infrastructure that will support the kinds of, kind of industry and business development that we'd like to see here. In particular, addressing some of the wastewater treatment plan issues that we've talked about with the municipalities and addressing some of the needs for roadway improvements like the bypass in Tawny Town. So, some conclusions, if we were to try to wrap this up into a few statements, is that increasing economic development opportunity is important to maintaining our high quality of life, but that we shouldn't strive to become like some of the surrounding counties and that investing in schools and infrastructure are essential to promoting good economic As for the rural, Commitment to Rural Carroll County Station, there were four themes that came out in those comments. The first was related to supporting rural economic activity. Being able to sustain the rural economy, both in small communities and on individual farms, was recognized as important. If we want to maintain our rural character, we need to make sure that that working landscape is actually a viable working landscape. So, some comments also noted the need to allow for farmers to diversify and gain better access to markets so that their enterprises can be sustainable, viable. The second was supporting the productive use of agricultural lands. So, making sure that ag land remains in productive use. That means partially trying to make sure that ag land is not used for solar or power lines, as well as continuing to invest in ag preservation and make the tools available for long-term investment in agriculture land preservation available to as many people as possible. The third thing was creating appealing growth areas to better preserve rural character outside of them, which I found very, very insightful. We did receive a number of comments from people who recognize that if we want to protect the rural character of the county, we have to be able to ensure that our designated growth areas are attractive places for people to live and work. So, making sure that those growth areas have what they need for public facilities, for public amenities, those kinds of things. And then the fourth theme related to preserving and restoring our natural resources because the rural areas don't only encompass farmland, but also a good deal of natural areas that there was support for making sure we protect and sustain. So, concluding thoughts, there's strong support for continuing land preservation and protecting the rural character of Carroll. Some growth and change is healthy and helps protect rural character on the whole. Our fourth station, uh-oh. There we go. Fourth station was infrastructure that meets the needs of tomorrow. And there were a number of themes that we've touched on already with a few other stations. Sidewalks, trails, bicycle paths, I've mentioned a couple of times here and people were very, very tuned in to not just the recreational benefits, but also the health benefits of providing these kinds of facilities. And a few of them noted that they should be accessible to multiple users. So, not just bikes or not just pedestrians, but maybe dogs, maybe folks who are in wheelchairs or that kind of thing. There were some comments specifically related to providing sidewalks along Maryland 26. So, good thought for future plan reviews. The second one was related to bypasses around municipalities. And we've already heard from Tawny Town and Manchester, both of whom are still very keen on having their planned bypasses constructed as a way to alleviate traffic on Main Street. And the third item was related to traffic on state and county roads. Some people mentioned very specific locations where they felt congestion was a real issue. So, Maryland 97, Maryland 26, and Maryland 32 were particularly called out. And then specific intersections were noted as being somewhat problematic. So, that included intersections around Nell's Acres in Eldersburg, White Rock Road, and Johnsville Road. There was also some concern about traffic at Ridge and Merrittsville Road, speeding on Bennett Road, and traffic in Lionborough. So, these were very site-specific comments and we did try to get as specific with people as possible so that we know where to look to look at some specific remedies. There was also comments about needing to address the intersection at Maryland 91 and 140, possibly with some sort of bridge over 91 or something like that that would allow for that intersection to be rethought. Schools was also very, very important at the infrastructure station, as well as at a number of other stations, but particularly at this one, especially in District 5 in the Eldersburg area. Comments related not just to capacity types of issues, but also the physical condition of the existing schools and the need to provide funding for the improvements there and to address some of the capacity issues. There were a number of other comments. The infrastructure station encompassed a whole lot of different types of infrastructure. So, we also received comments relating to technology upgrades, to parks and recreation, to healthcare, mass transit, public sewer in Finksburg and Lionborough, and stormwater management, as well as the landfill. So, concluding thoughts, in terms of what we heard, the focus should be on maintenance of existing infrastructure and capacity building to keep up with the anticipated growth. Particular interest was shown for walking and biking facilities. And every effort should be made to maintain and improve schools, which is why many people choose to live here. As for working together to plan the future, this encompassed working together with both municipalities, state, and regional agencies, as well as the general public. And this had four key areas, thematic areas, in terms of the comments we received. Public education was a huge area at this station as well. As I've mentioned multiple times here, people are very concerned about funding for the public schools and the overall need to prioritize education here. There were transportation and recreation comments left specifically related to some larger scale inter-jurisdictional types of recreational projects that would cross maybe county boundaries, like a regional greenway or bike trails. There were also comments left in support of public transportation. And it should be clear that the support was not necessarily for mass transit that would go outside of the county, but for some way for people to get around inside the county that would make it easier for teens or young adults who don't have a car to access the things that they need to, as well as seniors who maybe don't feel as comfortable driving and need to get to appointments or events. We also had comments related to public utilities and maybe some thoughts on collaborating with neighboring counties or states to provide additional power sources. And then, a big emphasis on county and municipal coordination, recognizing the relationship between the county and its municipalities to achieve mutual goals in terms of planning, especially on specific facilities and projects, like libraries, like community centers. And in particular, comments were left related to working with Mount Airy on the annexation of the Harrison-Lishir property, which the county currently owns. So, concluding thoughts on this station was a recognition that good planning requires coordination among many partners. In particular, people are concerned about the coordination needed to address funding and improvements for schools. Lastly, we did have a number of folks who left some comments, either at the welcome station or under a general comments section on the online feedback option. Again, we heard a lot of support for addressing needs in our schools, better and improved facilities for seniors, and medical facilities for people to access. And then the need to work with inter-agency, the need for inter-agency coordination, particularly on things like schools, but also properly managing the county budget, making sure that there are checks and balances in place, and providing things like trash pickup services around the county and implementation of the fire and EMS services. So, that was kind of a little bit of a mixed bag in the other comments section. If we can sum up those comments, we could say there are mixed feelings on the current state of the county and its future. A lot of people are happy with the direction that things are going, with the quality of life here, rural environment. A lot of other people have fears around uncontrolled growth, rising crime, declining infrastructure, higher taxes, and the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project. Okay, that's, those are the highlights of the feedback report. As I mentioned, the last almost half of it are the verbatim comments that we're providing to you, so you can read exactly what everybody wants you to hear. We tried to pull those into some summary statements, some assessment of what we heard on the whole, but of course, that's not a substitute for the actual comments that people made. So, I would encourage you to read through those and kind of absorb them. What we'll do from here is make sure that these comments are wrapped into discussions that we have moving forward. So, that could include discussions with the work groups. It could include any of the future direction setting conversations that we have with you. And as I mentioned earlier, the specific action items that people might have made comments on will be wrapped into the recommendations that we look at once we get to that real detailed list of specific things related to land use, regulatory mechanisms, policies, and capital or financial investment. And we'll make sure we pull those forward for your consideration during those discussions. Okay. Any questions that you have for me?
Sounds like it was very successful. Very successful.
Lot of work. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you for...
Well, I was really pleased with the turnout that we had and the engagement that people had. And, you know, really, the master plan should be a reflection of what we hear from the people, as well as the study and the debate that goes into all of these issues. So, we want to make sure that you hear directly from folks and hopefully that we've done that justice. I was going to say something else on that note, but it escapes me now.
That's okay. That's okay. I know that feeling.
Yeah. I think you've, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, they're all great ideas, but funding is always another issue.
Yes. So that reminds me of what I was going to say. I hope you'll see, and I think it's clear just even in this presentation, that there is no one way to go. There's a lot of different opinions on different things. We see variety from different parts of the county in terms of some of these topics. We hear differing opinions on the priorities that we should be placing on certain things. So there's really no one answer, one solution, one suggestion that's shared by everybody. So that's part of this process, is hearing all those differing opinions and trying to sift through them to see what direction we want to head over the next 10 years.
Yep.
I think the key word here is process. And I want to write something that I think I misled the panel on the last time we had a meeting, and it was about our zoning. The first master plan was adopted in 1964. But it was identified, the agricultural zone was identified, and sometime during that period, when the reservoir came in, then the conservation zone was adopted, which was one per three. In 1978, so from 1964, the first adopted plan, it took us all the way to 1978 before the ag zone with restrictions was really put into place. The ag zone was there a long time, in the 60s, with no real restrictions. If you had 100 acres, you could put 100 houses on it, and you mentioned that.
Yep.
But when the commissioners made the decision in 1978, it was a direct decision that was made that day. No retroactive, no anything. So there was no time to create a whole bunch of lots before the decision was finalized that particular day. A very bold move by the commissioners at that time, and the vote was two to one to restrict the ag zone. But in the same time, the commissioners did not feel that they should take on the conservation zone and do anything about it, even though it was a lot of discussion about what to do in the conservation zone, where you had one lot per every three acres, which was a fairly high density when we look at it now. But back then, the commissioners did not want to tamper with that because of an agreement that they had made about protecting the reservoir. So that sort of spurred big lot development in that area. Took a long time to help right that situation. We're kind of still in it, but there's been ordinances, code changes and everything over the years to try to mitigate some of that. So, you know, I was under the impression that it was a one, even though I had deep doubts when I said it, I was wondering about this conservation zone. Basically, it has never been tampered with since the very beginning. The ag zone was a little bit different animal, and even that, there was so much compromise when the ag zone was formed, and one of it was the seven to 20 acres, I think it's seven to 20 acres, and then the off-conveyance rules, the parts thereof. And so all of that were compromises that, in a way, helped mitigate the loss of the count on your property, but it also created other problems that we've been forever since 1978 trying to figure out what to do about it. You know, like splitting the off-conveyances, that goes back to the counts on the smaller properties. They were worried about properties under 20 acres. So that's when properties under 20 acres in the ag zone could create a whole lot more lots than a larger lot property. So I just wanted to balance that out to make the point that it takes a while, and it's never over, to try to figure out how to balance all the things that you just talked about, Daphne, which were really quite revealing on what people want to see out of our county, and then trying to get there and balance all the needs in the meantime. So I just wanted to make that comment on that conservation zone, because we kind of pondered that, what happened here? Well, nothing. It was never changed since the initial part. So I just wanted to clarify that.
You know, and thank you. When you were talking about conservation, I went back to thinking about today when Laura was reading about cannabis zoning, and when she said about it being in residential, and then conservation's not considered that. And it just struck me odd. But then I kind of realized, well, it's a larger parcel, so that would make sense.
It's a bit of a conundrum.
That's for another day. Do we have any other comment? Anybody here? No. Any public comment? No. Okay. Then thank you all, and yes.
You need a motion?
Oh, yeah, we do need a motion. I was trying.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
A second.
All in favor?